If you would take our places so we can continue the meeting. Okay, we are back now on the non-action items. The first is a discussion if the clerk would read.
It is discussion related to the ordinance establishing a service fee levy for 2018 related to the Capital City Downtown Business Improvement District.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you Mayor. Vince Frye, Director Downtown Topeka, is here tonight to provide us an update on downtown and the downtown business improvement industry.
Well, good evening Mayor, Council, staff. Appreciate the opportunity, as we do every year, to kind of give you an update on several things. I'm here to talk about the Business Improvement District, but I've also been asked to talk a little bit about what's happening downtown, as well as the grant fund that we also administer. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to start off with just kind of an overview of what's happening downtown. I'm going to pass out a document that just kind of goes block by block on some of the things that have been happening downtown. So, I'm sure you've been downtown and seen a lot of it, but I just wanted to remind you it was five years ago this month that this council approved funding for the infrastructure on Kansas Avenue. And that created the confidence that allowed the private sector to step up and be a partner with you. And so, since that time, over $4 million has been raised from the private sector for the enhancements to downtown. All of that is now complete. We have pocket parks, we have the pavilions, we have the medallions on the corners, we have statues of famous Topecas. The final one that we had funded is finished. It is representative of the Brown versus Board decision. It was a statue of McKinley Burnett that will be placed soon on Kansas Avenue. We even have a pocket park that is now off of Kansas Avenue because this is expanding outward. The Kansas Health Institute, which dedicated theirs last month on 8th Street. And next week, I'm excited to let you know that we will be lighting the arches on a permanent basis due to a donation that has been made by a local corporation. So, exciting things for downtown. All of the buildings that have been empty are in the hands of local investors. And as you probably all are aware, a lot of great things are coming. The Cyrus Hotel will be operational at this time next year. Across the street from that, the Pennant will be open around March 10th. The White Linen is now open in the Colombian building and will be a great place for dining. The Iron Rail Brewery and Restaurant will open in the old Kansas Grill next year. Randy and Deborah Clayton have built a brand-new building at 720 Kansas where HHB Barbecue burned. And so, we have new lofts, we have people living downtown, and next we have a plaza that we will be working to provide within the next two years. It will be programmed 250 to 300 days a year that I think will be the community gathering spot for years to come. So, that is kind of an update on what's happening downtown. It's been an exciting five years since you approved that funding, and I think you would agree that things have moved along nicely. And downtown is a place we can all be very proud of for what's happened. With regard to the Business Improvements District, I sent you a document kind of giving you an update of what happened this past year. If you had a chance to look at that, we gave you some history of how it came about. It was created in 1986 by the city. The city actually ran it for many years until they felt they didn't have the staff or the resources to continue. So, in 1995, they asked DTI if we would take it over, and we've been administering it ever since that time. Our mission has been to create an attractive physical environment, an attractive economic environment, and to achieve excellent quality of life as a center of government, commerce, culture, history, and recreation. As you all know, the Advisory Board is selected by the Mayor and approved by you. They provide to you a budget every year to operate off of, as well as services that the BID will perform. Those names of those people that serve on it are included. We have a gentleman that we employ who's up and down the avenue and throughout the district, six days a week, cleaning, maintaining, keeping a watchful eye on everything that's going on. It's a large area, but he is diligent in getting around. And he's a great gentleman who is very proud, very proud of what he does for downtown. And you'll also see him oftentimes on Sundays because we have a lot of events that happen Saturday, and he wants to be sure that come Monday, his downtown looks very good. So, he's also around during the winter months, moving the snow that accumulates. I'm very excited about the fact that we finished the completion of our Christmas decorations. We bought the first half last year. The other half, we just put up a couple of weeks ago. They look great. We also wanted to address some of the issues with cigarettes butts that were discarded up and down the avenues. So, the BID has purchased 17 more receptacles that will go on Kansas Avenue within the next couple of weeks. We keep a complete inventory of what's available downtown from a standpoint of apartments and available buildings. Of course, we've always wanted to be an entertainment district, so we've worked hard to create events that bring people downtown, over 35 events every year. Well over 100,000 people have come to our events this year to support the businesses that we have downtown. I've put a list of those there. We do a lot of promotion. That's another purpose of what we do for the BID. We have some great partners in the media that help us. We also do monthly meetings with all of the merchants. We put out a quarterly newsletter, and we do whatever we can to continue to communicate and let the people in the business that are paying this fee know what's going on. As you'll recall, this year, we changed the ordinance so that we changed the way it's assessed. We broke it down into tiers, three tiers. The closer you are to Kansas Avenue, the higher you pay. As you go out from Kansas Avenue, it's reduced. Based upon your recommendations, we are also assessing empty buildings at half that rate. So, no nonprofits are assessed, no residential are assessed, and of course, no government property is assessed. So, that's basically what we have done this year. It's very similar to what we do every year, but the ordinance, as far as the assessment, was changed this year, and we think it worked very well. As far as the grant funds, we've administered that since its inception in 2000. That was created by the city. They are grants that are provided for permanent improvements to downtown properties. We have had monies anywhere from $300,000 a year down to none. About three years ago, we had no dollars allocated. It started back up. The last two years, we've had $300,000, and you have allowed for $150,000 for next year for our grants. I just wanted to give you an update, and we do this every year by ordinance, we give you an update. But so far this year, the Grant Committee has granted $179,000 on projects totaling We have grants pending. We have granted them. This is a reimbursement program, so it's not paid until the program or the project is complete. We have another $375,000 in grants that we are ready to award when the projects are finished for projects totaling $35 million. So, as you can see, people are investing downtown. It's all because of the initial improvement, in my estimation, for the infrastructure changes that led to the private sector changes. And these additional grants are really leading to additional opportunities downtown. So, we're very grateful for that. And with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you for the report. Always good to hear the exciting, the steps, the progress that's being made every year. And are there questions, discussion? Councilman Cleer.
Remind me, and I hope you didn't say this, and I must have, what does the city provide? How much monies for the cleanup?
We have a budget of about $175,000 a year.
Okay.
That we operate off of.
That the city gives?
They assess. They assess the businesses in the district. And they collect that money, and then we operate off of hopefully everything that they collect. And we turn that budget in, in April or May every year for the upcoming year.
And so, this will provide those monies?
Correct.
And it's not tax dollars. It's assessed on the business people, the businesses.
Correct. Only the businesses in the district.
And is this enough? I mean...
Well, I will tell you, it's the exact same amount that was collected in 1986. So, to answer your question, no, it's not. And it also depends upon the ability of the city to collect it. So, we oftentimes are waiting to spend certain amounts based upon finding out if the city has collected enough for us to do it. There are things that we would like to change in the future, and at some point, we might come back to you and say, we have some changes that we'd like to recommend. One of them was this year's implementation of the tiered system and adding the empty buildings. But quite frankly, as you could imagine, since 1986, costs have gone up considerably, and we're still operating basically off that same amount of money.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just want to comment. Thank you for mentioning my little buddy down there, my cleanup buddy. I can't remember his name.
Paul Cervantes.
Paul Cervantes. You know, that guy is so proudful of what he does and how clean downtown Topeka is. And I've, and he told me he works seven days a week. And I cannot say enough good things about him and just the pride that he takes of keeping downtown clean and just going street by street. So, thank you for giving him a shout-out.
He is very prideful. We are very pleased that he works for us, and he's told me he's going to be there until he retires.
Other questions? Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Vince. Just wanted to ask, you know, when we get the downtown fixed and the sidewalks fixed, the medallions and the pocket parks in there, we're kind of just, I guess, just guessing that everybody would flock to fill all of those empty storefronts. And how much longer you think that's going to take before people are ready to start to pull that trigger?
Well, we're seeing them pull that trigger. I will tell you, it's something that I would like to see happening right now. But when you're spending millions of dollars, it takes time. It takes time to work with architects and make these plans come to fruition. We're very pleased that there are investors that are doing the top tank, which will be selecting a business for downtown in February. And they've had over 50 or 60 different applications for people that have ideas that they hope will be selected. I think there will be others that come from that list that will also be downtown. So, once again, it's a process. We've gone to cities and studied their downtown. It's taken 30 years for them to get to the point that they are. I think we're well ahead of that pace. And I can tell you, I'm excited about what I see, and within two years, I truly believe that downtown will be the place that everybody says, let's go downtown tonight because we'll see our friends, we'll have fun, and we know something fun is always going to be happening down there.
Other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none. Thank you. Thank you for the progress and your good report.
Thank you.
We support it. We're with you.
Thanks for all your help.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
The second discussion item, if the clerk would read.
It is discussion related to updating the Tennessee Town Neighborhood Plan as an element of the comprehensive plan.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning Director Bill Finder is here to give you a presentation on the updating of the Neighborhood Plan for Tennessee Town Neighborhood. The presentation will also include a description of the projects we've done with our SORT grant.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening again. I am proud to present a summary overview of our update to the Tennessee Town Neighborhood Plan. This is one of the two neighborhoods that were selected for SORT dollars in this, earlier this year, by yourself. And so, we're, we've culminated the process for Tennessee Town. For many of you, you probably know this, but we'll just kind of go over some, where is this? Most of the, most we know is southwest of the Medical District and the Library, Public Library, bounded by 10th to the north, Huntune to the south, Washburn on the west, and Clay to the east. This is one of our smaller neighborhoods. We have roughly a little bit over 700 people here, and although that is a 20% increase since 1990. You'll hear several things tonight as we went through our typical process, where we kicked it off in the, with the neighborhood in the spring, in March, culminated with a final meeting here where we had community input throughout, stakeholder committee meetings throughout. And I want to recognize my staff who did all this work with, in partnership with the NIA, Dan Warner and Tim Asparza. They did a great job getting it to this point. The history of Tennessee Town is rich. For many of you, you probably know this as well, but to remind everybody, this was a settlement that was on the outskirts of town, Topeka, that was settled by newly freed slaves as part of the Exodusster Movement. Obviously, that's where the name comes from, if you're wondering, Tennessee. It is the only remaining such neighborhood like this intact in Topeka. It also was the home of the first African-American kindergarten west of the Mississippi River that was partially opened by Reverend Charles Sheldon of What Would Jesus Do fame. More recent history is, shows a lot of success. Over the years, and this is close to me, close to my heart, because this is one of the first neighborhoods I worked with when I came to Topeka. 2001, we did one of our first neighborhood plans. I, by, this is probably a model of success, I would call. Given the, given the area and the people that we were able to, the passion that the people showed for this, for this area resulted in, as I, as I indicated, there's 20% increase in population since 1990. I don't know how many neighborhoods we can say that about in our core, but that is a huge statement. 30-plus new housing units went in. Most of those actually were private development, either a church or Topeka Housing Authority. There were some city investments as well. Churches invested. This is incredible array of church. King's Court was one of the, I think, faith temples investment in the, in the neighborhood and increased youth programs in the area. Lot, lot of accomplishments, so much that it is, we kind of point this out here on their health trends. On the far-left side there is 2,000. You can see a lot of reds and a lot of pinks. As you go progressively to the right, farthest to the right is your 2014, you begin to pick up some of those light blues and some of those outpatients, and you lose a lot of the reds. So, this transition from, and really transformation from intensive care to more of an outpatient and at-risk neighborhood is, says, says a lot about what they're committed to doing and what they have done. So, take it to this year. Current conditions, most of the area is still single-family residential. Two-thirds of it is, with a fairly decent single-family homeowner occupancy rate, 45%. There are still some deficiencies in terms of housing conditions in the area, but that's also highlighted by the number of vacant lots that are still left in the area, which is a higher number than usual. Current conditions with infrastructure is fairly typical for a neighborhood this, of this age with pavements and alleys and broken curbs and a lot of sidewalk gaps, a lot of overgrown sidewalks. I won't go through all this. Goals of the 2017 up there are pretty simple. We want to pick up where the 2001 plan left off and continue to improve housing and infrastructure conditions and bring the community together and partner. So, one of the huge upheavals prior to starting this plan in the neighborhood was the loss of one of their major anchors on the old Dylan's Grocery Store there on Huntune. And so, what makes this such a much more pleasant presentation is the fact that no one really could have imagined losing something that's so integral to that neighborhood would result in the repurposing of the building for almost, if not surpassing, the meaning to the neighborhood is Grace Med's proposal to do a health clinic for the, in the community and keep that as an anchor for Tennessee Town. So, that's part of the future land use that is forthcoming. The next part of the process, we looked at really with all those neighborhood plans, we look at targeting and targeting blocks that are, so we can have an impact, three-to-five block area. In the 2001 plan, we targeted the southern half, south of Munson. And you can see on this map, the lighter shades of color, lighter purple, that's better conditions. The darker the block gets, the worse conditions. So, south of Munson, you can see, has, has been stabilized quite a bit in their conditions. The area north of Munson, which is the primary target area for the neighborhood, that was actually in decent condition relative to the neighborhood 16 years ago. So, now that needs attention, and that has become their primary target area as we move forward. So, that's north of Munson, including Lincoln, Buchanan, and Clay Streets. Some of the projects that come out of that, or come out of the plan, recommendation include, again, for that target area, street work, building overlay, alley work, sidewalks. There's, for the first time, we have a water line that is being replaced as part of one of our plans with the SORT funds. And I was, this is, this is a 100-year-old line, one-to-two-inch line that's not connected, does not provide for fire, adequate fire protection, or for, in case of breaks, there's no redundancy. Replacing that is a, and I want to recognize the Utilities Department, Braxton Copley, Deputy, going out there and actually assessing this area on his own to find that type of thing and bring it back to the neighborhood and say, hey, here's a, here's a condition that we need upgraded. What do you think? And for, for something that you don't get to see on top of the ground, the neighborhood was, was extremely appreciative and welcomed that improvement into their package of projects. Also, there'll be a couple of major half-cent sales tax projects being, that, that being 12th and Huntune Streets will be improved. Obviously, we're not going to be spending $13 million in the, in this little section, but this does run through the neighborhood and will be a major improvement also when those come online in the next few years. Continue the housing improvements. Obviously, we are going to target the rehab money into those target areas first. And then, we also, one little twist, or new twist, I should say, thanks to working with Sasha Hahn and the Department of Neighborhood Relations, we're going to try and dip our toe back into some infill housing through a partnership. It won't just be the city, but we're working with Storm on Vale on donation of some lots. So, hopefully, as Habitat and Cornerstone will be able to use those for new infill housing, anywhere from four to six units. And with that, we have design guidelines that go with it that they, they meet, need to meet, and so we will blend in with the historic character of the, of the houses there Lastly, there's just a couple other kind of neat things that came out of the planning process, including currently, there are some, some cultural heritage, African-American heritage collections on display and exhibits in Buchanan School, Buchanan Center now. And one of the thoughts was to look at somehow preserving, maybe even relocating, the last shotgun-style house that's in the neighborhood and turn that into a kind of a living museum and commemorating the heritage of that neighborhood and where it's come, where it was and where it's come from. And then, in the middle there, certainly, one of the things that we didn't have back in 2001 was the Aaron Douglas Art Park, and that has been a rousing success, a couple events a year, looking to possibly expand that in conjunction with the Grace Med investments as well. So, those are some of the things that came out of our planning process. Again, our next steps will be to present to you this as an amendment to the comprehensive plan next week, and then hopefully, we get right to work in 2018 and 2019 to do all those things that we just talked about. So, with that...
Okay. Well, I will say, in looking at this, it is one of the best, most complete neighborhood plans that I've seen in the years I've been involved. It shows a great deal, of course, from Tennessee Town, as well as your staff. Are there people here from Tennessee Town, NIA?
I believe they've, they've stayed.
I'm still here.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, they'll be here next week.
Okay, very good. Well, I, we need to certainly introduce and show our appreciation for what, what you are doing, because it's tremendous, as well as Dan and Tim and your staff, the great, the good work that's done here is very important.
Thank you. Yeah, no, Tennessee Town, as I said, they, we've, we've had a long history with them in the Planning Department, and so they're great to work with. They are, and they even, they'll come out next week. You'll hear from them.
Okay.
I won't steal their thunder.
All right. Councilman Hiller, this is your district, so I know you have a part in everything that goes on there.
I have. But it's been well-presented. There was a lot of work that went into it on the part of the, there was a steering committee, as well as some bigger meetings amongst the neighborhood, and got some folks out that aren't usually out, so that's good. A lot of thought went into the choices, and so it, I was involved in some of the conversation. I know about, because it's small and because there really are a lot of vacant lots, you know, we've talked as a council about infill housing, but that's really something Tennessee Town needs. And so, building that into the plan, that's still a little unformed, but we'll get a chance to do some cutting-edge stuff, hopefully.
Very good. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. Look forward to the next step that we, that we'll be taking. That completes the non-action items for this evening. We go to the announcements and to the city man, I'm sorry. We have council meeting next week, so we will have the briefing of the agenda.
The December 12th agenda includes two presentations. The first is on Refuel Topeka Partners Association. The second is on Snow and Ice Removal Plan. We have a board appointment for the Downtown Business Improvement District Advisory Board for Jim Parish. We have an ordinance on the 2017 budget amendments. We have an ordinance relating to healthcare improvement revenue bond interest rate swap for Brewster Place. An ordinance on the Tennessee Town Neighborhood Plan. An ordinance on the 2018 Downtown Business Improvement District fee structure. We also will discuss the downtown parking plan. Non-action items include a discussion on the healthcare improvement revenue bonds for Sunflower Foundation, a discussion on the use of the 2017 excess general funds, discussion on the ambulance service franchise fees, discussion on the American Medical Response franchise agreement, and then we will have discussion on proposed utility rate increases.
Okay. We're going to have discussions next week. Come, ready to go to City Manager for your announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. It was brought to my attention that today is the 163rd birthday of the City of Topeka.
Right.
So, 163 years ago it was formed. Logan Scoggins, our Property Maintenance Inspector, will retire December 29th after 19 years of service with the City of Topeka.
Really?
I want to bring forward, I'm in the middle of the process related to the hiring of the next police chief, and I want to bring forward a request to the public, basically. I'd like to know more from this... I'd like to know more from them relative to what traits, abilities, and skills they feel are the most important for a police chief to have in the City of Topeka. The input on those traits, skills, and abilities can help guide me as I go through that interview process. You can provide your input to me in a few ways. You may write to me with a letter addressed to the City of Topeka, Brent Trout, City Manager, 215 Southeast 7th Street, Topeka, Kansas, 66603, or send me an email at nexttpdchief@topeka.org, or you may go to the City of Topeka's website at topeka.org/yournexttpdchief to provide your input in the box that's provided. The job description for this position is available on the website, and you can see those duties and job responsibilities. Eventually, in the process, in January, we'll have time for the public to be able to meet the final candidates, and obviously, I'll seek their input on which of those candidates that will be selected. So, as well, I also sent this information to the governing body, and I seek your input as well as to what traits and skills and abilities you would like to see in the chief, and we'll work through the process in getting our next chief hired.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Look forward to that. On Thanksgiving, I had the opportunity to participate at the Thanksgiving Dinner that's served, that's community-wide, one of the most fantastic events in Topeka, for about 700 that's come there, and then about over 1,000, 1,500 meals are delivered to the homes. The City of Employees were presented this plaque for the City of Topeka that I had the honor of accepting on behalf of the City Employees for the participation of the employees who strongly support the Thanksgiving meal, and also importantly, a plaque similar was presented to the Topeka Fire Department. Mark Benel, the Battalion Chief at Station 5, and firefighters from Station 5 were there. And just of interest, the fire stations are all, are the receiving point for drop-off of food, and you know that there are about 800 pounds of beans that are consumed at this meal. So 23% of all of that is brought to the fire stations, the firefighters take care of this, and then they also do the job of delivering it to the fairgrounds to prepare the meal. So certainly, we want to recognize the firefighters, but also city employees that work so hard on behalf of this event. And we go to Councilman Emerson, Councilwoman DeLisa.
Thank you, Mayor Wolgass. Your remarks. First of all, I want to just give a few, a quick report to the council with regards to my recent trip to Boston. I was able to meet with several new mayors that all participated in the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and it was pretty interesting to hear that a lot of the issues that we're facing in our community are the same issues that are being faced everywhere. We keep on talking about we're in Topeka, and it was really interesting to sit down with people from California, people from Oregon, people from South Carolina, and we were all having the same discussions. People discussing about trying to make sure that TPD relationships with the community are healthy, people discussing that they wanted to keep talent in their communities, even in California, people talking about potholes, even in California. And I say all these things because we typically feel like we are a community that is struggling with these issues on our own, when in reality, the infrastructure problem is a nationwide problem. The issues that we have in our community that we're managing with poverty, we're having them everywhere in the nation, because it's a national problem that is trickling down to our communities. So it's been really interesting to see just other people sharing the same ideas, sharing the same concerns, and trying to figure out how to operate better. Exciting things, there's opportunities. I know that we are a Bloomberg What Works City, and there's other opportunities that could be coming to our community with regards to, in the form of interns from Harvard, and also in regards to other opportunities for executive training. I spoke with City Manager this morning with regards to those things. So, I'm going to try to make sure that we bring in as many resources as we can. Second, I wanted to go ahead and give a shout-out to the good students at Scott Dual Magnet. I got a chance to sit down and talk to the whole school and give kids a whole bunch of hugs, and it was phenomenal. And I spoke with Sara Lucero, their principal, and with their team over there, and they said that they need volunteers. They need two sorts of volunteering experiences. The first volunteer experience that they need is that they have some of the kids going over to Puerto Rico, so that, because they are a Spanish-speaking school, and they want to expose the kids to a culture in which they're exposed specifically to Spanish. There's a donor in the community that if the students do 100 hours of volunteering, 50 hours of volunteering, they get $1,000. If they do 100 hours of volunteering, they get $2,000 and their trips are paid for. So if your organization has an opportunity for these children to do some sort of volunteer work, and these are children that are up to the age of fifth grade, please make sure that you pass that along. Second, the school is very excited that there's community volunteers that are interested in participating in the school, but they don't have Spanish-speaking volunteers that can go and read to the kids. Así que si me están escuchando, por favor, vayan a Scott Magnet y lean a los niños. Another thing that was talking, talked about in the, in the meeting was that when we're talking about poverty, I was excited to see the metro here today, they said that if you really want to be poverty, one of the number-one markers is being able to get transportation. And the neighborhoods that have the most need have the least access. So it was exciting to see the future plans that we have here. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. I just briefly want to thank all of my constituents and the city staff that have come out to the couple of public meetings we had in the last few weeks. It is really exciting to see the top-level staff folks come out and really explain what's happening in people's neighborhoods to them with some of the street projects and some of the infrastructure works. That just means so much to those constituents who really feel like somebody's there to answer their questions, that really knows what's going on, and it just reinforces that every area of our town is just as important as every other area, and we are committed to overhauling our community from one end to the other. Thank you guys so much for coming out to the public meetings, and thanks to the staff for hosting.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder that the Red Stocking Breakfast is this Saturday, 7:30 to 10:30. I'll be working the 9:30 to 10:30 shift. And I also wanted to share, this, last week, I sent an email to Mars and asked them where I could find candy bars, Snickers, Raminims that were made in Topeka. And so the lady responded back from Mars and said, and I don't know if the camera can see this, but at the bottom of the packaging, it says "Best Buy" and a date, and then it says "Top 21," and that's Topeka. So if you want to, you know, buy Mars and support our community, you can do that and tell the gift, where you're giving your gift, that that's made in Topeka.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to welcome the new City Manager, Trout, to District 8. So, thank you. Welcome.
Do you want me to explain?
Yes, I have purchased a duplex, or will be closing at the end of December, over
in Deputy Mayor Cohen's district, and so we'll be moving in probably in January.
No special street work out there now, just because you're there.
Got a bike route going by.
Okay. Councilman Hiller.
Just two kudos, if I could. First, to Marilac De La Isla, I think the fact that you went to the training is really wonderful, and I appreciate that you took the time to give us the report. Just think it really sets, sets a good role model for all of us. There were some years where it was just kind of pushed down that nobody should go anywhere and do anything, and I think setting that leadership before you even take office is really great, so, good for you. And I want to offer some kudos to City Manager Trout for opening up public input for the Police Department, Police Chief hiring. It gets really valuable and really timely. It's been nice to have the opportunity to meet the finalists after they're all the way down the line, but having everybody be able to give some input now is great. Thank you.
Thank you. And that, I will clarify, the webpage will be live starting tomorrow.
Okay.
It will go live in the morning.
Don't go tonight. Councilman Clear.
I just want to say, it's getting a little bit harder to decide what to do on the weekends because there's so much going on, but it's exciting.
Councilman Ortiz, nothing. That completes the announcements for this evening. We go then to public comment, and we have a number. Thank you for being patient for, this has been a long meeting, longer than they typically are, but glad to have you here. First is Regina Johnson, to be followed by Rose Welch. Is Regina here? Don't see her. Rose Welch, to be followed by Marty Hilliard.
Of course, my name is Rose Welch, if you recall me from last week, and I'm here because there is no neutral in matters of oppression. It doesn't matter that some of the issues that we're talking about, I wasn't even here before. I'm here now. And last week, I came and spoke to you guys, and I had some pretty strong words to say. And I hope that while you guys were at home for the holiday, celebrating and cherishing your families, you took the time to consider our words and the time to consider the families that did not get to cherish their relatives and loved ones, that are not going to get to cherish them this year, or next year, or any year ever again. So today, I want to address the matter of the unreleased body cam footage. There's been a lot of talk and a lot of passing the buck when it comes to the video, both requiring, both regarding what you're required to do, which is to show the footage to the executor of Dominique's estate, once one has finally been formally appointed by the court, and regarding what you are allowed to do. We've heard many untruths and obfuscations about what TPD can do, about what the DA can do, what the City Manager can do, and you all pass the buck back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth, like a child's game of hot potato. But the buck stops here with you guys. Passed around was a copy of the organizational hierarchy of our city, and as you can see and you should already know, above the police chief is the city manager, and above the city manager is the city council. Chairs the city council is the mayor, and above the mayor and council is us. And we're standing here today telling you to release that footage. We don't care how you personally feel about it, because it isn't about you. We don't care what you would want to happen if it was your family, because it's not your family. We care that you take ownership of this issue, because it's your responsibility as our elected leadership, because it's within your power as our elected leadership, and because it's the right thing to do. Release the body cam footage of Dominique White. No more playing hot potato like scared children, no more pussyfooting around, no more smear pieces about Dominique's family in the newspaper. Just release the damn footage. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Marty Hilliard, to be followed by Yasmar Rodriguez.
I'm here in witness of the life of Dominique White, his grieving family, and those who've been standing with him since his death on September 28th. Today, I want to address the topic of checks and balances. Because we know that power corrupts, our country has organized a system of checks and balances from the highest offices to the smallest cities. In the City of Topeka, the citizens check the city council, the city council checks the police, and the police check the citizens. We all use different methods to fulfill those responsibilities, and in fact, we're exercising one of them right now in this meeting. New technology has allowed us greater access to transparency and accountability, and used correctly, as technology can be a strong tool in our belt. As an example, these proceedings are being recorded right now, and any interested citizen can view this on YouTube tomorrow if they weren't able to be at the meeting, and that is a wonderful thing. Another wonderful tool are police body cams. Body cams have been rolling out all over the world for the last decade, and this has shown overwhelmingly positive results. We know that when body cams are on, the use of forces by police is reduced by half. We know that when body cams are on, violence against police by citizens drops to almost nothing. We know that when body cams are on, less false claims against the police happen, and legitimate claims can be evaluated fairly. With all this data in mind, we paid for and put body cams on all of our officers. But right now, that footage is not being made available to the public or to the city council, and that seems pretty strange to me. The city council is the employer for the police. The people are the employer for the city council, so why are none of the employers allowed to know what the employees are doing? I can't think of any other job where an employee is allowed to dictate to their employer what information they can see. And out of all the jobs in the world, police forcing is the one job where that should never, ever be allowed for even one instance. The entire point of body cam footage is to hold accountable police forces and the prosecutors who shield them. This is a concept understood since the second century. Who will watch the watchmen? In a system of checks and balances, we will watch the watchmen. It is our right, it is our responsibility, and we have fought for body cams on every officer for this purpose. Our entire country is predicated on the idea that justice can only come from checks and balances. By hiding this footage from us, Topeka police forces are opting out of our system of justice. And no matter the circumstances, this cannot be allowed. Members of the council, I am calling upon you to check the police in with all possible haste. We need you to begin to publicly address this topic no later than next week's city council meeting. And then before I go, I just want to offer my condolences for the loss of former city prosecutor Craig Spomer, who was far kinder to me than, than I deserve. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Yasmar Rodriguez, to be followed by Robert Schofield.
I hope that everyone here on city council is paying attention this afternoon, this evening. So let me just say that first. My name is Yasmar Rodriguez. I'm a lifelong Topeka resident. I'm also standing witness for the life of Dominique White and that of his grieving family. Today is December 5th, 2017, and it's been 68 days. I repeat, it's been 68 days since the death of Dominique White in the city. We have had endless news reports, letters to the editor, public comments to the council, and we still have no names, no footage, no answers, and most telling, no comments. Your silence is violent. I'm going to repeat that again. Your silence is violent against us. I'm calling upon this council to, to call a special session to address the death of Dominique White here in the city. I'm specifying a special session because I do not believe that there is enough time in the regular session to address both regular business and the topic of this importance. City council meetings approach the 10:00 PM rule on a regular basis, and this is not a topic that should be court-cut short. A special session can be called by either the city manager, or that of the mayor, or if neither of them has the guts to do so, by four city council members. You can call for it as soon as I'm done speaking, and because there's a quorum that's present here today, you can declare the date, time, location, and also the subject immediately. The city clerk can post that notice to the session on you all's website as soon as the meeting ends, and a special session can be done regarding this as soon as, as soon as I don't expect you all to meet on Friday, but what I do expect for you to do is at least set a session for this topic specifically within two weeks, no later than December 20th of this year. We want to leave here this evening with a special session that's locked into our calendars. We don't want to leave here tonight not knowing whether or not you guys care enough to address this issue that's happened, which has deeply divided our community and breeds only Malkington and civil unrest. We want to leave here tonight being able to trust that our city council has our best interests at heart. We want to leave here tonight being able to breathe just a tad bit easier, because our wounds are being addressed and no longer left to ignore, to be festered or rotted out. I want to leave here tonight knowing that we will not endure for Christmas with this corruption that's been in our hearts, and that we'll begin the new year clean. We've sat here for the past three and a quarter hours, listening to you guys talk about the importance of pot-belly pigs and that of their lives, but not that of the life of Dominique White. We've sat here and also listened to Mayor Wolgass talk to the gentleman who talked about the revitalization of downtown Topeka, and you talked about how you stood with him and you were supporting him. We need that for these people here, your constituents, as well as that of Dominique White's family. Again, I'm calling on you, Mayor Wolgass, as well as you, Brent Trout, to call this session as soon as we step away, immediately. We're calling on council members that, to call this session if Mayor Wolgass or Brent Trout fail to do so. And I'm going to say one last thing. We voted for you all. It's disgusting to listen and watch several of you all, including you, Ms. Sylvia Or... It's disgusting to listen and watch several of you all, including you, Ms. Sylvia Ortiz, be so disengaged with the people that voted for you directly in that community
Okay, now...
that you don't do anything.
Let her go, Mayor, let her go.
I'm sorry.
Listen to the folks that are talking to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may comment?
Part of the council rules are, in public comment, you can address the Council, you can speak to any issue that you wish. We do have within our rules that you speak to the Council as a whole, you do not speak to individual members, and it is not a time of question and answer back and forth. It's general rules that communities have for public comment. So we have to ask you to maintain that and speak to the Council as a whole rather than to individuals.
If I may comment, Ms. Mayor? I don't have a problem with them calling me out, because they don't know who I've talked to, they don't know who I've met with, they don't know what I've done, they don't know what information I've asked for. And so, I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, to falsely accuse me, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But I will stand strong. I know what my constituents have asked of me, and I know what I'm doing. So that doesn't even bother me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Schofield, to be followed by Barbara Schofield.
Barbara is not here today. I'm her husband, Rob Schofield, and I'm very pleased to be with you. I want to thank Councilwoman Scholz, Councilwoman Mayor-Elect De La Isla, of course, your office, Mayor Wolgast, and of course, the City Manager's office, in helping me on the issue I want to speak to you about, and that issue is transportation for disabled, and particularly economic disadvantaged, disabled adults, and children for that matter. The current American with Disabilities Act, and our city transportation department is in compliance, I was talking to Susan Duffy in her office extensively about this, provides a shuttle for those who are disabled. If you're within three quarters, three-quarter miles of a bus line, it's the cost of $4 per trip, or $8 total for a round trip. My family member, who has brought this to my attention, who Mayor Wolgast knows well, would have to pay $15 each way, or $30. Well, she is on a disability pension social security and a very limited VA, and that 30 bucks a shot going to the number of doctors she goes to will really break the bank. So I'm asking you to be creative, to take up this issue with the Metropolitan Transportation Authority. I don't know if it'll require legislative-type action. I hope not. I would like to think that any citizen in the city of Topeka in the limits could access, with disabilities, could access that van at the price of $4. Now, for my family's situation, if the bus line were extended on Wanamaker down to 37th Street, they would be in compliance of six tenths of a mile, you have to be within seven, you know, three-quarters, 7.5 of a mile, to get that $4 price. But I'm talking about some other people as well. I volunteer at the YMCA in Topeka, the Southwest Y, and there's a number of people with disabilities who come for water aerobics. And Susan Rank, who's in the staging room, is an instructor with me, and wonderful person. But we have one man, I'll call him John, that's not his real name, but he's dependent upon us to pick him up and bring him. He's with a walker, he had a stroke, and he cannot use the city transportation because he lives beyond the three-quarters mile limit of a bus line. Now, the YMCA is really his social world, and it's great physical recovery. You'd be amazed what people can do in the water. I encourage you to join our great YMCA. We have a fabulous Y here in Topeka, and I'm not being paid to say that. But in all consideration, I would like you to consider the people with special needs. The American with Disabilities Act was sponsored by Bob Dole, a Canzon, who went to Washburn University, right here in Topeka, and I believe I would speak with that intent. I applaud your efforts. This is my first meeting with you all. I'm very excited about what I see happening here. I enjoyed it. If I can be of help, to assist you to achieve the goal, I will be happy to work with you. I'm retired, I'm retired minister, I volunteer. Councilwoman Schwartz has my email, it says, I want to say Michelle, I worked with her at Habitat Pre-Band. Councilwoman De La Isla.
Okay, you finish.
Oh, that's what that is. I didn't know what that was, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next is Esther Lane, to be followed by Rosalie Cooper.
Rosalie had to leave, so I'm representing her also. I'm with the HOA of Pheasant Run, and I'm talking about the laundry facility, and I like to thank you all.
Okay, just, what is your name?
Esther Lane.
Okay, you're Esther Lane, and you said...
And Rosie's not going to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm representing her too.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank all of you for sending it back to the Commission to look at the laundry facility situation. I feel like that I did not evidently portray what I needed to portray at their meeting because it was not understood. At the meeting here, they said that there was very little people that did comment or come in to that meeting. I was representing over 300 people that live in Pheasant Run. We didn't all come down because I was presented to do that for them, and evidently, I did not make that clear, even though I did say I was the president, I mean, I was one of the board members. The other thing is, I see that with all the meetings that you've had here tonight, that you are concerned with safety and health of the people, and we feel like that this could cause a lot of difficulties in our health, as well as the incidents as far as safety. They said that they would have safety, security there, but that security cannot come into our property, or the doctor's office across the street, or any of these other places that are around there to keep us safe. The people that, I'm not good at this, sorry. The accidents and stuff, when we were talking about the incidents on that road, they were taking it as we were talking about the road closing on Wanamaker and bringing the traffic count up there, and yes, that was a problem, but that wasn't the issue. The issue was that we've had deaths of people pulling out of our location, because it is a complete, if you look at the drawings, it's a circle that goes around our property. The road does not go straight through. People come around there, and then we have kids getting off and on the bus right there. There's two buses that come every day, in the morning, and two at night, and that bus is right in direct line, and there's no stopping cars. They cannot see that coming around there. And that is one of the exits. The other exit, we've asked our people to use the other exit because it is the safest exit, but you still have a hill that they go up, and you don't see the car until it gets to the top of the hill. But there has not been any deaths there. We have had deaths at the other entrance. We have also had people driving and going through our fences, hitting our houses because of this trapping, and it had nothing to do with Wanamaker Road being open. Yes, the traffic was worse during that time, but people were going slower because they could not go down the road very fast. The signs out there say there is a speed limit, but it's not upheld. It was mentioned that there was a shooting across the street from us, and there was, and I was horrified by that, and we've not had any incidents like that until then, so don't write us off. Don't write us off because of one shooting.
Okay, you need to conclude your remarks, because you're in the last minute.
All right. We talked to the guy about, there's all these empty buildings here in Topeka, and there's one right down at the corner. It steers automatically, about the same size, and he could use that. There's a lot of empty buildings. So they need to use something that's empty. We've got all that empty space.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Esther, for your comments. There being no other business before the body tonight, we are adjourned. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I'm sorry, you're missing one person. Should we sign up?
I left a message with the City Clerk to be on the comment section. Yes, it was. It was about 4:40. Sarah, Oblisby-Dunagan.
Council, do you agree that we let her speak?
I'm Reverend Sarah Oblisby-Dunagan. I met with you all a couple of weeks ago. I have a couple of resources I'd like to share. One with the City Manager, and the other two currently with your mayor, but with your mayor-elect, obviously, I hope that you will pass these on. These are resources that I think will be useful in the conversation as we move forward as a city, and these are also handouts. As we look at how we interact with our Police Department, and what kinds of preventions we put in place for the situation that we have, the police shooting of Dominique White. So I am a clergy person here in town. I am the minister at the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, but I am here today as a concerned member of the community. I want to address the matter of officers, the officers who have been the cause of this conversation that we've been bringing to you, and our hopes that you will create a special session to talk specifically about the situation. These are the questions that I have, is who are these officers, and what are their records? Have they had issues before? We don't know, and that's not okay. I've heard over and over again, as I talk to city officials, and also to the Police Department, about the union, and about how there's a union contract, and how this is why we can't get this information released. So I went and got a copy of the current police employment contract, and this is kind of what I figured out, and you have it in front of you. The employment contract just flat out doesn't address body cam footage whatsoever, that I could find. Not once, not even one word. So I don't see that that's really an excuse for not releasing this footage. Maybe it would prejudice a jury, and maybe it wouldn't, but prior restraint isn't legal, and what happens in county court later on really isn't your business in the first place. So the employment contract does have a short provision about names, and that provision is right in front of you. I will read it out loud. Contract 44586, Agreement Between the City of Topeka and Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number Three, January 1st, 2016, through December 31st, 2018. Page 77, Section 16, Officer and PSO Privacy. When employee is under criminal or administrative investigation, the city shall not release the employee's home address, telephone number, or photograph to the media, nor include such employee's name in any press release except for compliance with a court order. Now, that seems pretty straightforward to me. While the investigation is still ongoing, and it is no longer ongoing anyway, you can put their names in a press, you can't put their names in a press release to the media, and if the media puts in requests for documents under the FOIA, you probably need to redact those names for those documents, but the family isn't the media. The family isn't the press. There's no provision in this contract which stops the police from giving the names to the family, and there's no provision in the contract which stops the police from giving the names to the City Council. It is within your power to release the names of those officers to the family, and it is your responsibility to release the names of those officers to the family. And we'd like to see you do that as soon as possible. Thank you for your time tonight. I hope that you will consider closely the issues that we've brought to you. I hope that you will consider making a special session to talk about these, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. The City Manager has requested that we go into an executive session this evening. Would, City Attorney, would you want to state, or do you approximate the amount of time? Yeah, we can do this, we can do that.
Motion would be to recess into executive session for a period of 15 minutes for consultation with city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privilege matters. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present, members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, and myself.
And I did declare...
Jackie, would you like Jackie?
I did declare the meeting adjourned. So can we move to reassemble?
Yes, I think we...
Would be appropriate to do.
Yes.
All right. Councilwoman Emerson has moved, and Councilwoman De La Isla has seconded, to reassemble the meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right.
Ten yes?
Ten yes. Nine yes. Nine yes. Carmen's gone. So we will go into executive session when the room is clear. I'm sorry, we need a motion to do, we need a motion to do that. De La Isla moves, and Councilwoman Emerson seconds, to go into executive session. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
We have nine yes?
It is nine, nine yes. We will go into executive session, room is clear.